Welcome, everybody. My name is Pierce Foles. I'm the founder of PSK, founder of Retail Innovation Week. And I'm the host of this session. I've been a little anxious about my role in this panel. Been anxious about how I'm going to open this panel for pretty obvious reasons. To help me, yesterday, I went for a drive to try to think over through what I how I wanted to start this session. I went to pick up some groceries for my family. And on the way, I listened to a radio show, a news show. And on the news show, these two interviewers were interviewing a business owner in Brooklyn, a black business owner who ran a beauty salon in Brooklyn. And they were asking what the impacts were of the crises. First of all, they started and they asked about the impact of COVID. And the owner talked about how she had to pivot and come up with new ways to make money during lockdown. And then the changes she's had to make post lockdown with the reopening, including, you know, the kind of laying off or the following of her staff with her or friends. Then the interviewer has asked her, so what about the, you know, the civil unrest as they described it? How did that impact your business? And she returned, she responded and talked about the importance of protests, the importance to protest injustice. But they stopped it and said, no, 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 no. How did the civil unrest impact your business? And I slowed down the car at that point because I realized that they are trying to get this entrepreneur, this business owner to say things that can fit within a narrative, a specific narrative. It reminded me, early in the day, I'd been looking at a website of the National Retail Federation, which is supposedly the voice of the retail industry. And on their homepage, they have, the only thing they have around the unrest, the protests, is a Fox News, Fox News video where the CEO, CEO of NRF talks about the looting. And, you know, I kind of, as I was driving, I think the narrative that is being portrayed is really trying to kind of talk to my most insecure, the most insecure aspects of people who look like me. And trying to kind of create a narrative that is, that is not constructive and does not build. So, you know, luckily, I changed the channel. I actually found myself listening, listening to the uplifting words of Reverend Sharpton at the funeral of George Freud. And I'm sure some of you were listening on. And I remember one thing that he said during that discussion or during his sermon. He talks about how he had an interaction with a white man while he was exercising, a white fella, I think. And the gentleman said to the reverends, are you still talking about race? And the reverend responded and said, oh, yes, we have a long road to go. So to help us a little way along the road, I'd like to introduce the kind of members of our community who will help us discuss the theme of retail, how it interacts with people of color and how we can build from here. On the call, I've got Melissa Gonzalez. She's a pioneer in agile retail, founder of Lioness. I have Devon Powers. She is the preeminent academic studying trends. And she's the author of the book On Trends: The Business of Forecasting the Future. I have Adora Udogu. She is the director of corporate innovation at Arla. Arla focuses on emerging tech such as spatial computing, user interfaces and 3D tech. We have Kelly Jacobs. She's an entrepreneur in the beauty and wellness space and is the founder of a startup called Balanced Beauty. We have G. Kofi Annan. He's a consumer insights professional. He's worked with small and large brands like Puma, Pfizer. And he believes that cross-cultural exchanges can fuel economic growth. We have Chantel Martin. She's an artist who work, whose work is a meditation on lines. And her work has filled galleries and has wrapped buildings and even the Times Square as well. And she has also been known to collaborate with brands on commercial projects. We have Michael Robinson, a leading innovation expert, whose work is at the intersection of products and packaging. And also a proud Brooklyn resident, as are probably a couple of the other panelists. And we have Sledge Smith, who's advisor to startups, especially startups who are looking for the early stage funding, fundraising. So please welcome our panelists as they join us on this special livestream. Hey, everybody.
Hey, Pierce.
Hey, Pierce.
Pierce, thank you so much for using your platform to create this space for us to have this very important conversation. You know, as tumultuous as this time has been, there's really such an opportunity with everything coming to the surface that we can now have these conversations and really talk about the impact of race, not just to only just shed light about the experience, but also think about how we can move forward and continue to do better in the future. You know, everything from how we work within our companies to understanding the consumer experience. And so I'm really excited that we have all of us together to have a really insightful and meaningful conversation and hopefully share with our communities really tactical, tactical and actionable things to kind of take back and continue this journey forward.
Well, it's great to have you here. You know, the topics that I think we wanted to talk about today is how retail interacts with people of color, whether it's as a shopper, as a member of staff, whether there's a staff in the store, staff in logistics, a staff, somebody in corporate establishment, how organizations interact with people of color, especially within their marketing and their brand communications. Would anybody like to help start that conversation?
Sure, actually, just, just context wise as well. I recently actually looked at a, some stats around discrimination specifically for, for the black community. A survey that Kantar did towards last year, but the results came out this year. And surprisingly, or maybe not surprising to some of us, those of us on this call, discrimination while shopping actually was the number one concern as it relates to discrimination with, discrimination within environments was the number one concern for, for, for the survey respondents. And the second one was discrimination within workplace. And then third was discrimination in restaurants. And then fourth was in interactions with law enforcement. So one of the things that, you know, as we look at kind of the Kindle that sparked the fire, the most recent fires around, really the outcry between the interaction between the black community, black and brown community and the law enforcement, we have to also realize that this is just a reflection of kind of a larger systemic issue that, that is inherent in a lot of different industries and environments. And retail and shopping being one of them, as the survey indicated. So, you know, for my fellow panelists, you know, is that surprising to us? You know, why do we think, do we think that it is the number one?
No, and I'll jump in here and, you know, I have a different perspective as a lot of you as being an artist. And, you know, obviously it isn't surprising to us. But the thing is, is these things are so normal. And these types of interactions and discriminations are so kind of intertwined in our everyday life, in our everyday life, that they have been normalized. And so, you know, I think right now it's really about unpicking these moments that we have in everyday interactions and showing that this isn't normal. It isn't acceptable, but it's something that we have come to accept as a part of our day-to-day interaction. And how do we stop that? And, you know, how do we actually just, you know, show that and then pick that apart and then take action on that?
Kofi, I'll add, you know, one of the things that I was seeing specifically yesterday, as a matter of fact, was people sharing the question, what was your first recalled experience with racism as a, as a black child or, you know, a child of color? And I took it a step further. I have mine like anyone else. But I started to think about what was my experience where I associated it with a brand? Because racism took place in association with that. And mine was the Gap. And this was a time exposing my, my age before, you know, Mickey Drexler became known as the Merchant Prince. But he was well on his rise and that was becoming a hot brand. And what, what had happened was I was in middle school and I had tried on some jeans at a Gap that I did not purchase. But in leaving the store, there was an assumption made that I had tried on those jeans to shoplift them. And the jeans that I had on weren't anything like the brand new jeans that I had taken into the fitting room. And over time, I asked myself, have I ever thought of Gap as a racist brand? Now, the answer is no, but I will always have that memory that took place at that origin. And everyone has an example like that. You know, when you think about this notion of getting on superlative lists, best place to work, best culture, things like that. One of the solutions needs to be, how do you measure how accountable you make the brand with regards to these types of experiences not happening? And, and attacking it from, from, from that standpoint? Because this is part of their narrative. And I'm sure I'm not the only person that has no examples like that, that take place.
Sledge, if I could jump in, this is Michael Robinson. Sorry about the little technical issue earlier. Sledge, I think part and parcel to that is, and what I'm interested in as a designer and someone who works in innovation is, all of those experiences are designed from the ground up. That experience of you walking into that store was designed. It was intentional. Whether that intent was explicit or implicit, there is still intent there. And so what I'm really curious about is just how can we, how can we acknowledge, hey, that these systems, that experience that you have, these retail experiences, are designed and be more intentional about how we redesign them? I think design itself begs, begs curiosity. I think it begs deconstruction, which is what a lot of, I think the movement is asking us right now. How can we deconstruct these systems that have been stacked up against us? And then reconstruct, how can we reconstruct new things? One of my inspirations is Aishay Bursell. She's a world-renowned designer. But she really takes this approach of deconstruction and reconstruction in order to make more equitable, build more equitable and human system.
I think it's telling, that survey, in the context of what's happening right now, which is it, the protests and the current movement was triggered by police violence. And that's fourth on the list. So that speaks volume about retail. Everyone shops, or at least the vast majority of people go into a store. The vast majority of people, even African Americans or people of color, don't all have interactions with police. The problem is, you know, the majority, when they do, there's often bad outcomes. But for retail, I mean, there's an opportunity in a way, I think, particularly when it comes to your point, Michael, about designing, which is my world around technology. So when we start talking about augmented reality or these filters, we start talking about avatars, we start talking about artificial intelligence and interacting with digital assets, be they animal, human, you know, some other type of object. We really need to be really conscious about what we're building in that digital world. We can't take the world that we live in right now and place it in the digital world because we know that there's just too many inequities that exist. So we have an opportunity as we're building these new digital worlds that are going to become increasingly critical to commerce and particularly retail, right? How you try your shoes on, how you try the coat on, whatever it is, you're going to be doing it. And so that means we have to make sure that we're inclusive in the way that we're hiring, we're inclusive in the way that we're attracting artists and creators and technologists who are sitting at the table when these brands are thinking about how they're going to take to the digital world and engage these audiences that we know are spending billions and billions of dollars.
I just wanted to add something to the conversation right here. So I think it's really important now that we're starting to talk a little bit about technology to acknowledge the fact that a lot of these technologies that are starting to be rolled out around data, around facial recognition, around AI, have a lot of the same discriminatory and unequal aspects kind of built into them. And to just give one example, I know, you know, I don't, I don't know, but I'm going to guess that most of the panelists here have had a problem with a camera recognizing your face. You've probably had a problem walking into a bathroom and having that faucet not recognize your skin because the way that the light, the way that the technology works, it absorbs into dark skin rather than reflects off of it. So those are just two really small examples. And so, you know, as much as I, as I understand and know and that AI and that data and that these things are really important sort of growth sectors for the retail space, at the same time, I just, I want to sort of press pause or at least slow down to make sure that we're implementing these technologies correctly and right, so that we're not reproducing some of the same systemic problems.
Yeah, I totally agree. You know, particularly looking at, you know, this kind of old saying, if you're here in kind of the, into producing experiences or products or whatever, you know, garbage in, garbage out, right? So, you know, which ultimately, as it relates to context for here, is like, what you put in as it relates to the insights and the, and the experiences that you put into the creation of an experience or a product is really what you're going to get out of it. And I think that's, that, that's what we're talking about here. You know, how you, who are the people that are curating some of those insights? Who are really understanding the, the context to which the experience will happen? And then how are they also taking those insights and those learnings and creating a product or insight? Or even a company that then gets, gets experienced by an audience? And, and, and that audience is receptive of that. And it certainly adds value within that community. And I think that's, that's a large part. Ultimately, within the retail space, there is that, that, that cycle, that funnel, that process that, that we, that's iterated on. It's just that at the different steps, there might not be the right players in there. Or at least they might not have the right context.
Can I chime in on that one? I agree, I agree completely. I think there's a lack of investment in cultural intelligence at firms. I think there's a lot of buyer personas that are created and a lot of assumptions around journey, but they're not taking the time and the real investment around intelligence around that. So whether that impacts design, if it impacts marketing campaigns. I read a recent survey that Adobe did. And 66% of African American and 53% of Latinos and Hispanics felt that most messaging campaigns that were put out there that were meant to address them are stereotypical. You know, they, they lean on stereotypes, they come off superficial, tone deaf. And how many times does a brand have to go out there and apologize? Sorry, we missed the mark. And that's completely unacceptable. So if we're really going to see change, then they have to make that investment first and stop with the generalities and really take the time to have the right people in the room, the employees, the leadership, the third-party consultants to really educate them.
You know, and I think that's an interesting point because, you know, time and time and time after again, these mistakes have happened where brands and institutions have to apologize. And so they know what they're doing wrong and they know what needs to be fixed. And, you know, time and time again, they ask for feedback and education, which, you know, if they're not willing to invest in that education and feedback within themselves and take action, then, you know, what is the fix? You know, it's, it's one thing to keep making these mistakes. But, you know, are they making these mistakes because it's laziness? It's lack of wanting to change? There isn't the profit in the change? You know, what is the thing that can be implemented? Because, you know, this story isn't new, these mistakes isn't new. And, you know, we can design for the future, but how do we design for the present? When, you know, the foundation of the building, so to say, is rotten? So how can we build on top of this rotten foundation without really picking that apart and readdressing it?
I mean, this is, I spent a lot of time, I mean, we, we talk about new, new technology, but there's a, the difference with the new technology today is so much of it is interdisciplinary. So you have the technologist, but then you also have the subject matter expert. So in other words, a coder is never going to tell a brain surgeon how to do brain surgery. That's just not going to happen, right? And a coder is not going to tell a brand, like, this is how you market. These are the products that you deliver to your consumer base or whatever your strategy is. And so it is of critical importance that there has to be a level of, a level of accountability. I don't know what that is. I mean, we can all sit here all day long. We talk about the numbers, the numbers, numbers. We know that there's decades now, right? Of just proof positive that if you, if you treat various groups and you speak to them directly in a way that is consistent with, you know, whatever it is, they find important. A brand does better. I mean, I don't need to tell anybody here. But at the end of the day, it can't just be us, people of color. We're not going to fix it. We didn't actually create this framework that we're operating under. So it has to be an interdisciplinary approach. It has to be a combination of leadership because there are very few people of color, Latino, Black, et cetera, who are in, in the C-suite. It just doesn't exist. So the C-suite has decided at a certain point, this is either a priority or it isn't. And they're going to reach out and, and devise a mechanism to be more inclusive in how they're making decisions and how they're rolling out, they're generating products and how they're rolling it out. I mean, it really is that simple, sort of to Chantel's point, right? We already know this. How many brands in the last year, from H and M to some of the luxury brand, you know, we can, we can go down the list, Gucci, who have had to apologize because they really stepped in it. Because there was nobody in the room who said to them, it doesn't make sense what you're doing. And so there has to be an impact of that. And we can analyst guess, right? But internally, I mean, we all know, they do take a hit. And maybe it isn't sustained, but they, but they take a hit. So how many times you want to just keep doing that? It's like, it's sort of insanity, right? It's just like over and over again. It's like, how do we break the cycle? I don't know, I don't have an answer. But it just feels like it is this cycle, 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 cycle. We have these conversations, conversations, conversations. And then we're going to be all here again in three years having the same conversation. So I don't know what the difference is. And I'd love to hear what some of you might think.
And, you know, some of the brands, just looking at this, that I think that have done very well in their response is, I feel like the default response is to kind of go to, put the onus on your black employee. But brands that I've found that have actually started to go into their communities and into the community to say, hey, what are we doing? How can we do better? And not just have a one-time focus group, but put a mechanism to your point in place where you have an ongoing conversation. Because I think it's really realizing, you know what? We did make some assumptions and we are, this is a blind spot for us. We want to do better. And these are the steps that we're taking to do that. So I think that's, I've seen, and the output from the brands that have taken those steps have, in my opinion, have really hit the mark in terms of their communication during this time.
Give us examples of who you think.
So, so say beauty, it's a new beauty line that came out. I think they've done a great job of really reaching into their community and having honest conversations. And not just kind of going a default response of like putting up a black screen, but like actually let us understand what's happening, what is your experience? So I thought that was handled very well. And, you know, and even like Huda Beauty, like you see a lot, like I see so much on my WhatsApp group and with other of my friends and every brand. I've seen so many Excel documents going through where they list every company, how, what's the percentage of people of color within that company? Have they made a post? Have they donated? Have they actually made a response? So you have a consumer group that is watching and, and really like, really trying to understand what your responses and what your role is through all of this. And so brands that are stepping up and actually showing that they're taking action, I'm noticing. My peers are noticing. And so it's thinking about what are the immediate steps that you could take right now? And I think starting and engaging community is one of them.
If I could, if I could add to that, this is, this is definitely a great question. Adora and Kelly, I think one of the things that, that I don't want to skip over that. People are watching, you know, people are keeping record. And it's so easy to do that now. Because, look, we have the world at our fingertips with search engines, et cetera. So it's not hard. And especially for, for younger people, I'm, I'm encouraged by, by my friends' kids, by my own cousins, friends, et cetera, where I'm seeing that engagement, right? That level of, A, I can search for this knowledge at a moment's notice. B, I can connect with the community that shares my values about what I'm seeing. And C, I can make a choice and let brands know, I'm making a choice and let it be known around the world. I think, you know, sometimes the disconnect I see, and I think about like sustainability in it, right? Think 20 years ago, 30 years ago, companies, large companies weren't thinking about sustainability. Well, that's something that we can do down the road. But companies who have made, have made the best strides have tied their sustainability strategy into their organization, how their organization operates, how they make decision, those, those checkpoints, if you will, are built, they are, they hang off of that strategy. I don't understand why we can't do the same for diversity. Why we can't do the same for, for, for what we're talking about here. Today, Zidlin from Tapestry, the CEO of Tapestry, I think, recently came out with a post that I think exemplifies this leadership is a black man meeting one of the largest fashion companies in the world. And he's saying enough, enough. And I really do think that his peers need to, need to follow by example. Peers being the C-suite, whether they're black, white, Asian, otherwise, really do need to follow by example.
And to pick up just a little bit, to pick up, I just want to pick up something Adora said about this will happen over and over again. And it's a comment about, are people ready to learn? I mean, is there an issue with how people learn within organizations? How do we break that cycle of just kind of repetition?
I think it was a really great point that Micah brought up about, you know, how are you measuring this and how are you quantifying people's engagement, right? So if you can look at your business and only 2% of your business comes from people of color, then you're probably really not engaging that community. And just from like an effective way to run a business, you know, even if you're thinking at just dollars and cents, it doesn't make sense. And so really thinking about, I think the metrics around it can really help. I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, no, I definitely agree. The, you know, what is the success measurement? And I think that's where the, the retail brands or weaker organizations can really, really focus on, right? So what is the current success measurements, both from a, from a organizational, kind of the C-suite, but then even at the store level, right? How are you training your employees and those who are managing your different retail outlets? How are you measuring their success and priming them for engagement with, with these different communities? And then reinforcing certain behaviors and recommending others? So it is, it is about those metrics, both from a, from a business KPI perspective, but then also from operational. And I think that they're, they're kind of adjacent efforts, particularly around kind of the social innovation and to some extent, the corporate social responsibility kind of processes, you know, though those have been traditionally separate from kind of the core business, but kind of looking for insights in how some other industries have done it and how some other industries and organizations have been successful. And then using those as, as, as a base for retail and, and, and consumer products. I think the other part about it, Kelly, that you mentioned, which I, I found really interesting too, is that a lot of the brands that you mentioned were, as far as success, brands who successfully raised their voice and impacted within particularly this short time, is that they were beauty brands, right? And within the retail context, a lot of the beauty brands have been moving a lot further and faster as it relates to engaging with diverse communities. And then also rethinking how their processes, their processes and policies have, are structured. So, you know, just if you're, if you're a large CPG brand, maybe looking at the beauty brands and kind of learning from them as well. So it's, it doesn't end up being that you're starting from scratch and you're reinventing the wheel. Everyone doesn't need to reinvent the wheel.
I just, very quickly, the other thing is, Kelly, to your point, at the end of the day, I spend a lot of time with startups and you think, take, you even think about Gen Z or, you know, Generation Alpha, the one after that, and including millennials, you know, all the way down. But there is this greater sense of value-based shopping, right? I care about where a company stands on something. And so it's been fascinating to see how companies have come out. And again, to your point, Kelly, some of them have been much more specific around actions that they, they are taking or have taken. I mean, on Wall Street, which I have actually been shocked by, there's been a couple of big banks who have immediately said, we can no longer have an executive committee or a central committee, organizing committee that doesn't have any people of color on it. And so they have promoted, not one, but in many cases, they've done two or three. Because again, they're paying attention to all those numbers that say it isn't enough that one person is colored in the room, that you do better if you have a couple. Because being the lone voice is exhausting, always being the one. And at the same time, I would say, you know, the C-suite can't be afraid to ask questions of your African American and people of color, your employees. You know, it's, it's sometimes better to try to do something as opposed to do nothing, which happens a lot because of not feeling you're going to do it right, correctly. In this society, we don't do a good job, we don't have good language around how to talk across cultures, across races, and, and find some way to truly communicate. So I think it's just worth noting that, you know, the economic pressure, I think, will increase. So you might as well get a jumpstart on it now by being more and trying to do so effectively.
I'm gonna say.
Can Devin say something?
Brands, oh, I apologize, Sledge.
Devin, did you have something to say?
I did, but I think Sledge did as well, so.
I was just gonna add to Kelly's point. I was watching Twitter yesterday and one of the tweets that went out was from the yes. So reflecting Kofi's point about the beauty industry setting precedent, the yes was very specific, that, that they, they not only stood for the importance of what was happening right now with Black Lives Matter, they wanted to put their money where their mouth is. And they wanted to hear, who are the black-owned brands in fashion that I'm not aware of? Because I'm not black and I'm not following that, that I should be. And, and by the way, they don't just have to be black, you know? I want to, I want to hear about all people of, of, of color that are doing dynamic things because they're dynamic people. And, and we should be providing them a platform and a distribution channel to market as, as well. So I was all too happy to provide our multiple names, some of, some of which are, are clients of mine. And to Adora's point as well, it's not just one area. It's not just the C-suite, it's not just the senior leadership team below it, it's not just middle management. It's, it's, it's all of it, as well as the vendors that support those organizations with regards to opening up a pipeline that essentially creates, you know, the vertical integration of human capital that's inclusive.
Yeah, so I wanted to add just a couple of things. I wanted to first address this idea that's come up a couple of times about having this conversation over and over and over again. I hope that in a, in a year and two years' time, we're not at this particular moment with, you know, a police shooting and a brutal murder that has cycled through social media and caused gigantic protests. But I don't think that we will leave the moment of struggling through the conversations about race and inequity for a long time, because the struggle and the conversation is the work, right? So, so I think that's what, you know, that's sort of one point, is to not see this as a solution that can be fixed quickly. Because you don't fix, you know, hundreds of years of oppression, like with the drop of a hat. But then the second thing I wanted to mention was the issue of diversity. And there's also been a couple of times we've said, you know, you want to have the right people in the room. And I think that's absolutely true. But you also need to make sure that those people feel comfortable and able to speak and empowered to speak and ask for their opinion and heard, even if their opinion is difficult to hear. And I think that that is one of the things that makes it difficult for companies to retain black talent or talent of color, because they rub up against the sort of institutional structures that even if the faces and the bodies are there, the structures are not in place to sort of absorb that and make them feel as though they can be included. So that's why it's, it's diversity and it's inclusion. And it's also this constant sort of just looking at yourself and, and self-criticism and the desire to sort of welcome that self-criticism, not as something that smarts and makes somebody, you know, the pariah in the room, but something that can actually make a company better.
Yeah, Devin, if I could build on that, thank you. I, I both personally and I have a very good colleague who is managing through this big thing, right? Being the person in. And, you know, I'm very curious if we can also help our teams in these organizations, unwieldy thing, create those spaces of trauma effectively. Because absorb or understand how to direct trauma, because it is traumatic. It has happened over the past weeks, months, years, 400 years, if I could, traumatic. So how do you direct that? How do you, how do you create systems and absorb, accommodate, create safely? That people, so that people can feel comfortable bringing their whole selves to it, because that's what it's. And literally, quite literally, this is, this is important for ourselves, for our friends, for our family members that look like us as well.
I think if brands adopted that mindset, that in general, black consumers matter, right? You know, we're talking about Black Lives Matter and how it relates to police and justice and everything else. But understanding with your brand, the black consumer matters. And what you'll see is that then influences everything else that you do. That black consumer matters and you want to take the time to understand who they are. You want to spend, invest the money in resources and insights. You want to make sure that you have a diverse team, so you make sure that you're hitting the right tone for your messaging. You want to make sure that that consumer experience in your store, that, that consumer matters, that that consumer experience for them is a pleasant one, that they want to come back. So if you think about kind of what are the steps, if you understand and adopt this mindset that the black consumer matters, what are the things that we can put in place to really, to really show that? And to really make sure that we're, we're supporting this consumer that matters? Because in all honesty, you know, I worked for a large beauty company for over 10 years and worked through the transition before, you know, pre Rihanna and Fenty, where now 50 Shades of Foundation are a standard, where many times darker shades were an afterthought. And in many cases, with a lot of marketing campaigns, you have, you know, you kind of check the box for having the one person of color. So, and we feel that, you know? We feel that we're kind of, we're not being spoken to directly. And I don't feel that I, as a consumer, matter to you. So what are the steps that you can do? Because brands are capable, we know when the Chinese consumer matters, we know when the traveling retail consumer matters. So how can brands really adopt this mindset of the black consumer matters? And it should matter, because we live in a world where there's no longer a one-way conversation. There are conversations being had on social media, about you, to you. People are commenting, people are watching. And so there's, it's, it needs to happen. And I think brands need to share what they're doing. And I think we're in this time, that's why I think this time is an opportunity where everything's open, right? Where we're having open conversations, we're in this forum where people are willing to talk and share that experience. So let us use this opportunity to grow better and put these systems in place because our black consumer matters.
Well, maybe we can jump to Chantel at this point, because there's a recent moment where a brand reached out to, to try to communicate a message. And maybe Chantel, you can just touch upon that and just maybe also talk about how we can build off that experience as well or learn from it.
You know, the, the interesting thing is that we've always been having these conversations. You know, anyone that is probably not white, you've been having these conversations, you've been in the room with your friends, with your colleagues, having these conversations, because it impacts us on a daily basis. And the, you know, the issue with is, is this doesn't impact you, then you don't care. And then if you don't care, why would you implement real change? You know, Pierce is talking about, you know, an email that I received from an agency, McCann, on behalf of Microsoft, that said basically, dear black person, can you help this paint a mural for Black Lives Matters? But can you do it by Sunday, why the protests are still relevant? You know, it took me a couple of days to digest this. I didn't post it socially lightly, but I posted it also kind of with a message to call out why this was wrong. And, you know, the, the problem is, is when we do that as individuals or as institutions or as artists, we put ourselves at risk, you know? We risk, you know, there could be reactions or, you know, things that come back to us backlash for that. And so firstly, you know, it's hard for us to speak out because we are at risk when we do that. And when we did, you know, when I did do that, I got countless emails and privately back from people at these agencies that says, I'm black, I'm at this agency, I'm exhausted. I told them not to send this email, I told them not to do this project, and this is why. There are people of color in these organizations, in these agencies that aren't listened to. You know, they've had these conversations, they've had these struggles. It's just that people at the top aren't affected directly, so why implement the change? You know, it was interesting, you know, people from Microsoft and McCann reached out to me and said, what is your feedback? You know, how can you educate us? How can you advise us? And I said, you know, it's not my job as a single artist to advise you how and why this email went out. It's not my job to give you feedback. You are the head of a trillion-dollar company. If the fact that this email went out shows that there isn't the support, there isn't the guidance, and there isn't the structure and the strategy within a company to show why this was wrong. I don't want anyone fired, I don't want anyone to be scapegoated. But I want us to think about how and why this happened and take action. And what should have happened is that said companies or agencies should have reached out to me and said, Chantel, it was wrong, we know it was wrong, here's some actions that we're going to take. We might not get it right straight away, but we're willing to try. And this is the actions that we're going to take from this catalyst. Instead of being lazy and scapegoating and saying, please educate me, please give us feedback. Like, it doesn't work like that. We're not here to educate you. There are plenty of books out there, there are plenty resources out there, there are plenty movies out there, there are plenty of academics out there that you could bring onto your team. There are plenty artists out there that you could bring into those conversations, into those meetings, so that there is those voices perhaps that are new and not exhausted, that can be a part of the conversation. So I think, you know, kind of long story short, you know, we do have people in the room. Often they're exhausted. If it's not affecting people at the top, they don't really want to implement change, because then that is costly, it takes time, it takes investment, it takes commitment. And I think, you know, just a few months ago, everything was women, 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 you know, 2020, it's all women. You know, this is the year for women, this is the one year for women, instead of a 200 or a 20-year commitment to women. And I think we need to be mindful now, you know, Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter. It shouldn't be a one-month or a one-year or a two-year or a 20-year commitment. This needs to be a 200-year commitment and it has to start now.
Chantel, thank you for that. As, as, as a black queer designer, Pride year was last year. If, if any, it was the most, it was the most celebrated year ever, Pride, any year. So I'm excited, happy Pride Month to everyone here and everyone viewing. I'm excited to bring Pride back this year as well, because this is a time where we need to find those intersections as well. Need to find those intersections of race, gender, and being that are so important to us. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, and, and to speak very quickly on that, you know, last year was Pride. And as an artist, you know, just before Pride, all the brands reached out to me, you know, dear queer artist, dear, you know, gay artist, can you do X thing? Because we want to spend our marketing dollars and be a part of this trend. And, you know, it's the same problem. It, you know, if I was an athlete, they would say, you know, we want to endorse you, we want to sponsor you, we want to invest in your career. But brands and institutions, they say, you know, you're an visual artist, we want to have this very transactional kind of interaction. We want to exploit you because you're culturally relevant right now, and then we'll spit you out. And so there needs to be, when it comes to women, when it comes to Pride, when it comes to minorities, when it becomes to people with disabilities, any of those buckets. This is the investment that we are putting into you and others. This is the commitment, because this is relevant now. And we will make sure that it continues to be relevant and that we will invest in it. And so we need to see these types of conversations versus these one-off, very, you know, mindless interactions.
And I'm just jumping in there, I certainly agree, you know, it's, it's, it's really short-term tactics versus long-term strategy. And I think that's, that's ultimately where the, the, the switch of thinking comes in and it translates into those, those interaction and emails like that, right? You know, we were talking earlier in the green room, someone mentioned this, one of the, there was a designer recently who put out a thing on, on Instagram about the 15% pledge. I think it's 15%pledge.org. And she, you know, what she posted.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Sledge, I think you, you had some more background around that.
So Aurora James is a black founder, a female founder of a footwear company. And she put out a piece on what retail could do as a whole is commit to using as a placeholder 15% of shelf space, which is highly competitive and highly expensive to get for black-owned businesses. And what was stunning about that was she had shared responses that she was, was getting, which were very high volume, which the reaction was, was, was fear in terms of, oh my God, that's, that's so much, we can't, we can't give that, you know? How could we, how could we give you, how could we give you that much? Why can't we give you something, but it, it be less? And, and her point was, that's not the point. The point is, I'm putting the onus on myself in terms of quality, high caliber, critical thinking for solutions that represent what this should be about all along, when you're talking about economic inequality to make changes. And that is, how do we begin to look at ways that we shape the transactional value of the fact that there are dynamic people out there, black and of color, and, and of, of, of different genders, who are not getting a fair shake to show how their innovations with investment can get an exponential return? So it, Kofi, not to hijack your, your, your point, but I found that the impact that that had on me in terms of what I do is I'm, I primarily focus on, you know, teaching founders the fundamentals of how to raise capital. But they have to be able to present what Melody Hobson calls, she used the line, math doesn't have an opinion, you know, representing of what, what do metrics look like that demonstrate that, okay, if I give these, if I give a founder fuel to pour on the fire, the returns for me are going to be significant, because that person is dope. And, you know, the, the whole point is, black founders are also dope. So I know that I'm going to be spending a lot more of my time on the business development side, making warm intros and applying acumen to the fundamentals of how do you develop those, 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 those metrics? So the other aspect of what I do in getting you in a room, you know, you're, you're, you're ready for that. But, but yeah, it was, it was a great, it's a great article from her.
Sledge, could I ask, this was also a part of the conversation in the green room around those metrics. And I, you know, a lot of times I hear about 10x returns, right? People are looking at types of returns on their investments, etc. How, how does, does that need to shift? Does it need to shift? Are there other frameworks that we can think about that around returns? What investors and how to look at that? Thanks.
Well, it's a, it's a great question, and there's a couple of things, Michael. I, I think the dominant conversation when it comes to startups is validation that the money has to be institutional and, and in terms of institutional, it specifically has to be from VC. So for example, when a VC raises a lot of money for a fund, the bigger a return that they have to get on a bet that they're willing to make. So they accept like a 65, 70% failure rate.
Fire, Sledge. It's like, I mean, the business model is probably closer 95% failure.
Yeah, yeah, but to Aurora's point, the point I was about to make is if they can just get that one that is an explosion of 1,400% or whatever it is, they're willing. But while I've not directly had a client where it was said to, that's, that's gotten capital, I know for a fact that there are those where that's off the table. They have conviction in who it is that they want to make a bet on, because they think that they can deliver a significant return. And they're telling them as they hand them their check, regardless of what the outcome is, hey, if you don't get this one right, well, come back to me and we'll get them, you know, the next time. So I spent a lot of time working with founders to help them get to investors. That is essentially curating, you know, the aspect of them getting to people that will believe in what they're doing, because they have a passion for the space. You're obviously not going to take a founder in an area of direct-to-consumer to someone whose focus is on enterprise SaaS. So people can look at it any number of ways that, that, that they want to, if they have conviction in the promise of that founder in the first place. It's not, it, it, it's not, better term, black and white, that, you know, if somebody doesn't have what they think could be a 10x or 100x return, that they're not going to necessarily make an, an investment in them if they believe in them. So, you know, it's an, it's an all-encompassing conversation. I, you know, I'm spending a lot of time on, look, it doesn't have to be VC, because to Adora's point, you know, the, the, the bar is so high. You know, you want to be able to get money from people that believe in you and are going to roll up their sleeves and support you beyond the check.
So that, that's wonderful. I've got to be conscious of everyone's time, and maybe we have about five minutes left together. So that maybe I can suggest we bring a little bit back into retail and potentially kind of lessons. It was great to kind of get some of those lessons from Chantel and a few of the rest of you about what can we do, what could that brand have done, what could that agency have done? Any kind of constructive feedback we can build off of?
I have, I have an idea. I think that, you know, diversity is CSR. And like, we sort of know that in the sense of going out into communities and taking that photo that's, you know, going to be plastered everywhere to make you look good in your annual report or what have you. But I think it's, you know, I want to go back to something that Michael was saying. But I think it's, you know, I want to go back to something that Michael was saying about sustainability and really thinking about diversity on that kind of level as a as a real responsibility that companies need to take on and need to sort of factor into their into their bottom line, if you will. And I think that that, you know, that that really begins in terms of making sure that, you know, that diversity, you know, many companies bring in a diversity consultant who does something once every couple of years, or if there's an incident, right? Like, it shouldn't be like that. It shouldn't be a crisis, you know, an intervention to a crisis. It should be an ongoing conversation that is opened up, that is regular, that helps to build an organizational culture, so that this just becomes something, you know, something that people come to expect and are used to and want in their workplace.
Can I chime in on that? I think it's also, there's a lot of firms that create groups. I've been a part of many groups at firms, and sometimes it was fully inclusive, sometimes it wasn't. But it stayed in that room too many times. It was a quarterly meeting that we had, we talked about topics together, and then it didn't go past that. And so unless there is a strategy plan beyond that, so that those conversations, those learnings get passed on through the employees throughout the firm, and that there are wider learnings, you're not going to see change. And to me, that's been a constant frustration.
And to add to that, with change, you need accountability. And, you know, without accountability on each level and every level, we we will never see change. And to kind of extend on what Sledge was saying earlier, I think right now, we see investing as in black people as a charity, and it should not be seen as a charity. These are innovative, successful, high-quality businesses that do not have the exposure and the input and investment that they need. And investing in them is investing in successful companies. And it shouldn't be seen as a charity, it should be seen as normal.
And I think at the end of the day, you have to have the investment. I think we've all said this in a variety of different ways. Whatever brand you are, or whatever it is that you're selling, if you want to, listen, retail's under C. I mean, the industry is struggling in so many different ways. You would think that every brand is looking for any competitive advantage anywhere. And and honestly, it's in in some ways, for some brands, and, you know, obviously, there's a lot of different kinds of brands and different demographics and so on, so forth. But there are definitely some brands that could do exponentially better in terms of their bottom line, if they would just take some of these.
Yeah.
Actually hire people, bring them in, and, you know, understand how you integrate some of that thinking, as, you know, Chantel said, and as we've all said, there's a lot of good frameworks out there, there's lots of best practices, there's lots of ways to integrate that to scale in your company. I mean, the information is out there. So for those companies that are really serious about saving themselves, particularly through these really uncertain times, as we've moved to digital at a rapid pace, you you might want to just think about how you actually make those changes, because it's just, you know, the numbers are there quantifiably and factually, that you will improve your bottom line for those companies that these issues are the most relevant and where there's the most opportunity in the marketplace.
Adora. I agree, Adora.
Oh.
Yeah, I I was just gonna say that, I agree, Adora. You know, the 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 thing about it is that retail brands need reinvention, right? Rebranding, then to rethink their strategy, if not just for this context within a more recent past month, month and a half, two months. You know, COVID has already initiated that, right? So just like digital and technology transformed retail and transformed, you know, societies and how people interacted with brands and how brands built experiences in every little bit of our life, you know, a lot of the retail brands need to look at this current situation as a similar thing. If you do not reinvent your brand, if you do not really read the room and look at the resources you have and restructure how you do business, you will end up as Kodak, right? And we all know kind of that context, right? You know, not looking at the opportunity for what it is and and the opportunity as an opportunity and kind of resting on your laurels and then being left out in 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 the near future. And things are moving much faster now. We're talking about by the end of, by by Q1 next year, 2021, by Q1 2022. So things are moving really quickly. This is an opportunity to rethink how retail brands do business, how they create experiences, who they're interacting with, and then just reach out to the different resources and put together a team that's an a company-wide strategy.
I, to echo that, what an opportunity, right? If if any brand, any business had an opportunity, it's now to reimagine. I think the thing that resonates with me and Devin, thank you, about sustainability is about realizing that things are. Things do not exist in our world. Retail experience is tied to the experience I have looking in, just from the street. I know that's tied to my background, tied to that salesperson's background, et cetera. So if we realize these systems are interconnected, we can do something about that by dismantling them and then systemically reconnect.
That's great. Kelly, Sledge, do you have any final comments?
Yeah, you know, to everyone else's point on on this this very topic, it's a perfect storm, because the actions have to be authentic, in which buyers are now looking, and they're a lot younger, who are having discretionary income, a lot younger, that are holding brands accountable for what they stand for. And if their actions don't fit that, then they're not going to buy. You know, they're the very people who are out there protesting. I saw a lot of 10, 12, 14, 16-year-olds getting out there, and they mean it. So in in terms of that change, what I am anticipating seeing is that opens the door wide for the very brands that they want to see, that are authentic, that they want to support and will buy from them. And if you're not going to give those a chance, then you're not going to make any money.
Yeah, I agree, I echo everyone's point, that this really is a perfect storm, but also a great opportunity. And I know this is something, Pierce, we've spoken about this as a group, of this is not just kind of a one-time handle. This is going to be an ongoing journey to to kind of to work towards. And so I know that this, we've spoken about having an ongoing conversation. This isn't just kind of a one drop in the pan, but really kind of coming together to really tackle some of these things together. And I don't know, Pierce, if you want to talk to that, as like a next step for anyone?
That's wonderful. As we've all heard, the the importance of continuing this discussion, whether it's 100, one year, one month, or 20 years, 200 years, as Chantel said. What we'd like to do, especially under Kelly's leadership, is to create at least one or more follow-ups, maybe more of a kind of Zoom, typical Zoom call, where we can all come together, the people in the audience who are watching today can be part of a session where we can discuss some of these topics that we talked about today and more, and just kind of build solutions. So I'll be following up with an email link, you know, I like to email you lots of times. So a link to that session, and I hope you can join us. I want to thank everybody for, everyone on this call, and for their generosity of time, generosity of just openness, and, you know, sharing what must be kind of at times very difficult, difficult things to discuss typically. I want to thank you for your generosity in guiding me and generosity in kind of guiding everybody else. And I appreciate everybody who's been watching for donating, you know, donating their time and spending time just trying to understand this matter, and I hope it gives you a starting point from where to build. Thank you, everybody, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Pierce.
Thanks, everyone. Goodbye.